There is a motion, we will entertain.
I'll motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Second.
Moved by Chris, second by Pat. All in favor? Motion passed unanimously. We anticipate, we'll say about forty, thirty, thirty to forty-five minutes to be safe, we'll be back from executive session. So we'll see folks. We are going to continue with our agenda. Welcome to everybody who's here. We're going to move to item three point two, approval or modification of the tentative agenda.
I move that we modify the agenda to take out the personnel agenda and make it eleven point one.
Second.
So moving the personnel report out of the consent agenda and making it business item eleven point one, and then everything else will slide down one number. All in favor? Fantastic. So the agenda is so modified. We will now turn to item four point one, which is public comment period. Folks, could please feel free to stand and talk where they're at, or you can come up to the table. Tricia will be using her clock for our three minutes, and I will turn it over to my colleague, Morley Lang.
Our first commentator is Paul Matolo, and it's virtual.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. I'm really pleased to be with you tonight. My name is Paul Matolo. Hello, Dr. Brown. Hello, Jill. Hello, Erin. Hi, Tricia. Thank you a lot for your help getting into this meeting tonight. I want to share three things with you tonight. I want to share who I am. I'd like to draw attention to a crisis that we're all facing as community members and members of the school district, and then offer my help for solutions. My name is Paul Matolo. I am a dad of two students in the Ithaca City School District for a little over six years. I'm also an Ithaca resident for more than seventeen years. I'm also a PhD chemist, and so I know something about tough problems. So there's a crisis facing us, which I think many of you are aware, that TAs, aides, teachers, and other specialty staff are leaving our school district in large numbers, and this is threatening to undermine the education of our students. This is coming at a time where there are trends like this happening around our country and around our state. But this is Ithaca, and things are happening here, and they're happening locally in such a way that I think we can also help to find solutions locally for things that matter. This is having an extreme effect on our students, especially those students in our district who are people with disabilities or who have IEPs. Because, as you know, they have extra additional staff who are with them that allow access to the education through the district. My son is one of those people, and we experienced firsthand how this turnover is affecting folks like my son. I implore the district to do better at sharing with the community what you are doing about retention plans, about salary and compensation plans, and to be open and honest about the challenges that are here locally, facing us locally. It's unsettling when there are articles in the Ithaca Voice that go unanswered by the district or any representative of the district. It's unsettling when we come to the district to talk and we get handed statistics on a national scale, but no recognition of what's happening here locally. So I offered solutions. We have been a partner with the school district for many years and love to see the improvements that are happening around inclusion. And we would love to continue to work with you. You ensure that the staff that make inclusion possible are being honored for their positions in that important part of the district's work. Without the staff and the people that allow students like my son to attend and to be a student at Ithaca City School District, principles of inclusion make no sense. So please reach out. I will be keeping in touch with each of you and look forward to working with you to find solutions to this local present crisis that we have to overcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Our second speaker is Tom Barnett-Lam.
Thank you. This year, Luba, a sixteen-year-old girl from Ukraine, will be staying with us since she's unable to return home due to the war. I originally booked this slot to discuss the insurmountable difficulties we had faced getting her enrolled at IHS. Happily, after I wrote to the board last week, the administration contacted me saying that the entire decision to deny Luba registration had been a mistake. Dan Bryman has moved heaven and earth to register her in record time, and I'm very pleased to say that her first day was today. We are profoundly grateful for this. We are also very grateful to New Roots Charter School, which during our difficulties promptly offered to provide Luba a place even at considerable financial risk to themselves. Even though Luba is now at IHS, we remain very grateful to New Roots for their immediate and instinctual move to help a child in need. Despite the happy ending to Luba's individual story, I feel we cannot simply say all's well that ends well. We came this close to never realizing that the decision we were given denying registration was mistaken. Another Luba could so easily have never been able to study at IHS. So if we want the next Luba to be met with Ithaca's famous welcoming spirit, that will take concrete changes to the bureaucracy, and we must avoid settling for vague hopes that things will be different next time. Luba's situation resolved well, due not only to Dan's quick action, but also, I must acknowledge, due to my privilege, which enabled me to effectively bring the issue to his attention. I strongly believe it is vital in such situations to change systems. We must make sure that the next family confronting a similar situation gets the right outcome regardless of the privilege they possess. So I would like to ask that the administration diligently review in private the processes that led to the aberrant outcome in this case and reflect on what must be changed. I would like to ask that every potential registration denial that involves a child displaced by war or natural disaster be escalated to senior personnel so that misunderstandings are avoided. And I would like to ask that a clear commitment to help displaced children be publicly adopted by the district so that parents more easily recognize any future mistakes as mistakes and can fight to have them rectified. Some of these steps may already be in progress. Dan told me that ICSD would work to make sure that this never occurs again, and I am grateful. We know "never again" is easy to say and hard to live up to. I plead with each of you. Make sure we live up to those words.
Thank you, Tom.
And her person who has signed up is Leah O'Connor, and I don't know whether she's in person. She is.
So I am here to talk about the agenda item, the academic calendar change and adding two half-days in, I think it's May, February, and November. And also in this new calendar that came out is a early release day. So these are two separate things, but sort of come together as one. So I'm the director of one of the local after-school programs, and I will tell you that we are struggling, and many of our counterparts, not mine, but many of ours, are not able to offer care during this time due to staffing issues. Or I'm not speaking to them. I don't know what their issues are, but I know that they are not offering care at this time. I budgeted way back when the calendar came out for all of the days that we're going to offer full care for our families, and to bring up two after the fact sort of blows my budget. And I've already talked to my staff about when, when I expect them there, that many of them have other jobs, many of them are students, and so asking now for them to change these things is difficult. I will try to ask them to do it, but it's difficult. So, and then we have the new early release day, which I'm pretty sure is a state thing. We used to have it. I mean, the student COVID made it go away. It used to be in October. It is now on the calendar again, and it is in May. I can't remember the exact date. And this is not related to having a half-day, but it is related to working parents where we release fifteen minutes early. I don't know why we do the early release day. My assumption is it's a state thing, but I can't be open on that day. And that's just a state law. Nobody can be in the room. So now you're opening up a calendar to three days that we did not know of prior to the year starting. I waited for the calendar to come out to start my summer camp, to have spaces available for my kid, you know, kids during, when Cornell opens, but school's not open. I think it's a real hardship to working families to all of a sudden be having really two days that you're asking for off, and then what I'm assuming is a non-negotiation. But it is three days that we did not know when we started looking and budgeting and getting ready for the school year.
Thank you. First, thank you to all of our speakers who came. I believe that's everybody that's on the list for this evening. Thank you to Paul. Thank you to Thomas. Thank you to Leah. We do have on our agenda an opportunity for board responses, and I want to remind both our community and the folks who spoke. There are times when the board will not provide a response at this meeting, but may provide a response at another meeting upon gathering additional information, talking with administration, talking with the experts in the room as well. So if you don't hear a response today, it doesn't mean that we are not working on it or thinking about it. It means that we are trying to gather the appropriate information, but I greatly appreciate everybody sharing. So with that caveat, are there any board responses?
Well, I would just say, Leah, that when the agenda item comes up on half-days, we're going to be having a discussion that will include discussion of the impact on families and after-school programs.
Fantastic. Thank you, board colleagues. Up next on the agenda is item four point three, our student reps. These are Ithaca High School student reps. Welcome. We've had the pleasure of meeting you earlier in the summer, but I've asked each of our student reps that they wouldn't reintroduce themselves to make sure that we also have it on tape, as they say, or camera, or some sort of recording that we're going to have.
Hello, I'm Grace Lim, a senior, and this is my third year as a rep to the board. It's good to be back as a student rep for my final year.
I'm McCann Gore, and I'm a junior at IHS. This is my first year as a representative of education, and I'm looking forward to it.
My name is Clara Park. I'm a sophomore at IHS, and I'm super excited to be there with everyone else.
My name is Viarcon, and I'm a senior at Ithaca High School, and it's also my first year at the Board of Directors.
Students have transitioned smoothly into the school year with freshman orientation events held by our link crew and seeing new faces in the administrative staff and teachers. On the first day, there were videos shot by our administrators on lockdown drills and cell phone policies, giving new students an overview of IHS policies and old students a refresher. There was much concern last year over a mass wave of well-loved teachers and staff leaving our district or retiring, which reflected the nationwide teacher-staff shortage. Although questions still arise about teacher-staff retention and pay, it was a relief and new excitement meeting the new teachers across all departments at IHS and several new administrators. Personally, I'm excited to see a woman tech teacher and a technology teacher of color. I'm sure Gloria and the district HR team have been working hard to secure all of these positions, so I'd like to give a shout out to them. Students are happy for the administrative staff and teachers that have moved to other positions or retired, but will miss the friendly faces at IHS such as Arnold, and Richardson, and Steve, and many others. Too many to list. The halls of IHS are alive and a welcome sight to teachers and students.
The biggest change this school year is universal lunch and our new seven-period schedule. Every student has a mandatory lunch, which some students appreciate. Many students are pleasantly surprised with how smooth the lunch lines are, that there are enough spaces for everyone to eat, which were the biggest concerns for last year when the IDO was first introduced. But with one less period to take classes, there are some students who still face scheduling issues and are unable to take the courses that they wanted to. There are also concerns about the upcoming cold weather and if there will be enough space when all students eat inside.
Fall sports season has begun. Coaches, administrations, support staff, and all, all other employees have worked hard to make this year's fall season a safety, fun one. Thank you, Mr. Knight, for coming back. We are so excited to have you. Cross-country cheerleading and all other sports teams are in full swing. Football, tennis, and soccer has had home games at IHS, and the golf team had a game today at Cornell. Swim and dive competed today, and Ithaca volleyball team has most likely finished their game at the Lister. Yesterday, the boys varsity soccer team had a game against Elmira and won 2-0. We have gotten to use our new scoreboard, and it is excellent. The images displayed, both the players' pictures and what was happening during the game with fun graphics.
And on the topic of sports, although we have our new scoreboard, there are renovations that are needed to the sports area. One example are the tennis courts. Due to the strong storm from more than a month ago, one of our fences were bent and our courts were blocked. So we're still having this problem where twenty-five varsity tennis students are still playing their matches and practices on only four courts, which is a challenge for them. And we were told that our fence would be fixed two weeks ago, but haven't heard in communication since. And we'd really appreciate if there are any updates on when our courts will be fixed. Also, many of our IHS student-based clubs are meeting for the first time after school this week. Today, the Tapler, our IHS student newspaper, had their first writers' meeting open to all students, and it was a big hit. And our first issue of the school year for the Tapler was Sisters' Day on Wednesday last week, so I hope everyone had their chance to read.
Thank you. Fantastic. Again, on the agenda, it has space for board responses. And I remind Claire that hopefully, when we come back, to talk about next week, the fence, that we won't have to talk about the fence, but we will do, gather some more information and work with our facilities team to get more information about that. But any additional responses? Chris Alvin.
Chris, thank you for recognizing the hard work and also recognizing the tech teacher and the new teachers coming in. I know Gladira will be excited. She's worked feverishly with recruitment over the last year and a half, so it's great to hear that. With that focus, you know, on diversity and inclusion was huge, so. And I am so happy to hear about the scoreboard. I've got to see this thing in action.
Perfect.
I echo Chris's comments. Also, Grace, you're reminding us that Steve retired made me so sad. But it's well-deserved, and nothing made me happier than hearing pleasantly surprised attached to the praise universal lunch. And I am your board rep to the high school, and I look forward to stopping in sometime and seeing this with my eyes and anything else that people would like to show me. Thank you.
Buy your lunch. Morley.
I would just add, on the subject of retention, I believe our, our last meeting, the subject came up, and I recalled that the, that Gladira and other members of the HR office had made a very, very detailed presentation to the HR committee, and we are going to be having that presentation for the full board at a meeting sometime soon.
Yes, soon. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Moving the agenda forward, up next is the consent agenda. We'll entertain motions.
I'll move the consent agenda with the modification.
Second.
Moved by Chris, second by Pat. Before we vote on the consent agenda, because it does include this year's tax warrant, we're going to ask Amanda Burko to come up and just provide a little additional context for our board members and our community. Hello, Amanda.
Hello. Hello. Sorry for the long entrance there.
Oh, it wasn't that long.
Well, everyone, it is pretty much tax season, right? So what you see before you is a resolution for the board on the consent agenda for the tax warrant, and then an attachment, right, which is actually produced in collaboration with the assessor's offices in Tioga County and in Tompkins County. And so, you know, the, the resolution itself, one of the most important parts for me is the note on the bottom, right? It outlines actually the phases of tax collection, right? The one in October, which is October 1st through October 31st, which is the no penalty period. Tax bills will be nailed prior to October 1, close to, but prior to October 1, because that's just how tax bills are produced in collaboration with our county assessor's office. And then if you miss that deadline, the October 31st, you start into a penalty period, right? And that next penalty period goes from November 1st through November 30th, and that is a 2% penalty on your taxes. If you miss that period, then there is a third period. Unfortunately, that penalty then goes up a bit more, and that is from December 1st through December 29th due to the holidays and weekends, and that would be a 3% penalty. At any time, you can pay your taxes. Just know that if you miss sort of those pieces, there are penalties incurred. After that date, right, those unpaid tax bills go to the appropriate next taxable entity, which is either the county, Tompkins County, or Tioga County, or the city of Ithaca. And they will work with taxpayers to get those payments. And then we, the district, are made whole by those entities. They actually pay us, and then they are responsible for gathering those taxes. Remember that people pay taxes lots of ways. Sometimes it's through your mortgage companies, right, so you might ask for them. You can actually pay with credit card. We have opportunities for that. We didn't have that before. If there is a fee, we've tried to work so that it's as small as possible, but it's not for the district. It's actually through the company, right, to process those payments. Payments go as your tax bill will state. You can pay them directly at a Tompkins Trust Company. That's always been the entity where you can actually go and write a check. We also have an opportunity to complete sort of an e-pay, right, so that you can do right from your bank account. So there's paperwork on our website as well, so you can pick that up right here in our tax office. We have a new tax official, Matt Connie Talmage, who actually came to us from Tompkins Trust Company and worked directly with Ithaca City School District, so we have a very knowledgeable person managing the tax online. And so we'll return calls, you know, outside of business hours, but it will be regularly here Monday through Friday. And we are fully staffed in the business office to work with taxpayers. One big reminder, we do not collect payments in the district office. One thing that I do want to mention about the attachment, right, which is the tax extension sheet. Number one, if you print it, it's really tiny, just so you know. So I had to write big notes to myself. There were some questions, right? Just as a reminder to taxpayers, we made a promise that we would hold the tax rate, right, at the rate from last year, so you wouldn't see an increase in the rate, and so you will see the tax rate again as $16.8378. And that is by, you know, it goes out a couple of decimal points. You won't have to be paying that. It's rounded, right? But just so you know, that tax rate is held flat. There is something for the properties that are actually in Tioga County, Candor, and Richford. Our district, school district, actually is beyond Tompkins County. We actually have taxable units and students that attend that live in Candor and Richford, just like we do in the town of Lansing and the town of Dryden. So our school district, your town lines or your village lines don't always align with your school district lines. You're going to see that those two communities in Tioga County this year actually have an equalization rate. And so simply put, an equalization rate is the relationship between your property's assessed value and your property's full value, right? So there is a, there's a difference, a discrepancy between your full value and your assessed value in certain communities. This just means that probably the assessment office hasn't caught up with the real property value, the full value. And so you'll notice the equalization rate of .855 for Candor, right, means that that property is actually assessed at 85.5% of its full value, right? So there was a calculation to figure out what their school tax rate would be using that equalization rate. And the full value is equal to the assessed value divided by that equalization rate. So they'll have a different tax rate than we will, as will Richford, okay? So just so you know, it's, it's, again, the state does that. The state creates that equalization rate. We do not. But their, their bills will be a little bit different. We did hold our promise, though, about the rate and due to that equalization rate, which is beyond our control, that's actually. I think there was one other question, too. Just, we do include the state aid, the estimated state aid on the sheet as well, again, for transparency purposes, so that people can see the revenue pieces in our district. You can see that our state aid is much lower than our, our major source of revenue, which is our tax revenue.
The electronic payment, is there a fee for that?
No, my understanding is that that is not, there is no fee. I think that there's only a little bit of an upcharge with the credit card piece.
Right, yeah.
Additional questions for you?
So if municipalities collect all of this, and after December 29th, 2022, if they will pay us regardless if they received everything.
Correct. They make us whole.
So do we ever go back to calculate how many people went beyond that timeframe, or not on our books and records, but on theirs?
We actually, we do, and in fact, I think we bring that forward to the, to the board, and we do report also in our audit reports, we actually have to say sort of at a moment in time, how, what percentage of taxes have we collected at that moment in time? So we're usually in the 90s. I think we're in the mid-90s by that time.
I mean, you'd be better than me, but I recall seeing it during the audit committee.
Yep, exactly. We have to complete a form for that.
I will say that until I came on the board, I did not realize that our school district extended into Tioga County. How many students do we have in Tioga County, or how many, or how many properties?
I would have to give you the rolls. We can find that actually from the tax rolls. And so I'm sorry, and we're not prepared with those numbers, but I can do that for you. And you can see the numbers here in terms of like the taxable value. The taxable value is exceptionally low, right, compared to a lot of other entities. But that doesn't tell you that that might be a residence where students live, right? Those are properties.
Those are properties, right.
Right, so what you're asking for, I'd like to be able to give you a little bit of a breakdown, okay?
For our community, maybe our students who haven't had a chance to look at this. For example, the taxable property in Candor is $3.1 million, and the city of Ithaca, it's $2.4 billion. Right, so just to, for a frame of, of reference to what takes place. And my understanding, it's entirely possible that And my understanding, it's entirely possible that we may have no students from Candor, but it's property tax that comes to the scuffle.
That is restricted to pay taxes here, yep.
Additional questions for? Amanda, thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Additional questions or discussion about the consent agenda? Mr. Mark, will we use the look to you because some of this comes through finance? I don't know if this is.
We don't have anything related, uh, this.
Fantastic. That'll be the next meeting. And for our community, it's important to know, we'll talk about this later on, that Governor Hopple has not extended a state of emergency, which means that according to open meeting laws, virtual meetings are no longer acceptable. Uh, we can do hybrid meetings, which we'll be discussing later on in next meeting as well. But with that change also means that the meeting minutes will no longer include a transcript. They will revert back to the minutes that they did previously, which would be a summary of what took place during our meetings as well. So that's what you see in our meeting, our minutes for this meeting is a summary and not a transcript. There's no other questions or comments? All in favor of the consent agenda? Haxis unanimously? Fantastic, and we are on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown, we need to hear from you.
Oh, okay, it's, no, it's, I'm sorry, we moved the personnel report, but it's later.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thanks for providing me this time on the agenda, Dr. Brown. Just, I'm gonna show a couple of minutes here. And it's been some time since we were together. And we started schools since we were together, the board meeting. And before starting school, we had our convocation. And I'll share with you the request that I had of all educators in our convocation this year. And that was to first thank every young person that comes into our space for being here. Um, just a, a true thank you, thank you for being here. And along with that validation and affirmation, we have asked folks to use every day to cultivate joy. Now, we are doing some, what I feel is innovative and progressive work when it comes to curriculum writing, professional development, um, offering high level courses. We, we do some amazing things, everyone the best for this in the country. And I want us to be known for cultivating joy in all that we do. Whether it's our curriculum model, our central model, or our co-curricular opportunities, it's important for us to cultivate joy. And I'm here to tell you that the first couple of weeks, the first week has been just that from my perspective. Um, and I want to thank our community, I want to thank our young people for the patience and the trust that you extend to us, particularly around something like, i.e. the schedule at our high school. We all sat in meetings here all last year where we asked for your patience and your trust as we attempted to do something innovative. And as a person who, who was in the cafeteria today and in, in line less time than I typically spend at a grocery store, you know, like, not, not, only at Tops. Other grocery stores, it moves much faster, much faster. Anyway, um, it took, you know, the lines were long, but I, it was seven minutes, right, Dr. Brown? Seven minutes before the lines were cleared and young people were engaging with one another. And it was frankly, it was, I had, I've never been in a situation where I could see every young person at a school, at a high school of our size. And walking the hallways and being in the cafeteria, I saw everyone. And that was beautiful. Uh, so I know we will continue to be better with that and other things that we are partnering with our young people to do. But I'm just here to say, oh, this has been a good opening. And I feel and see the joy in our spaces. And some of the presentations you'll hear later, we'll talk about that some too. But yeah, just a quick update on where we are. Um, and I would also ask folks to go to our website and look for updates on our capital projects. Um, the new bus loop or the new loop at Southfield Elementary is transformative. No longer can, do you get stuck in traffic coming down or going up the hill at around 2 o'clock every day, all right? Um, what's happening at ACS, that's gonna get awesome. I can't wait for this person to show up, um, to speak to their excitement around what's gonna be happening in that entrance. And yes, we are under construction at DeWitt, I was there today as well. And yes, young people are inconvenienced, but the vision for that new, uh, performing art space and for the patio, um, you know, there's some joy around just anticipating what we design collaboratively, that's gonna be pretty cool. So I'll ask folks to go onto our website and check out what's happening with our capital project. Check out what's happening with professional development, check out what's happening with curriculum development, because everything has been engineered to build and to promote joy. And I'm feeling it myself as one person. And thank you for the opportunity to say.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, appreciate it. I'll, I'll add about our capital projects. The, we will have a facilities committee meeting next Tuesday. And I know that Amanda Verba has been working with building leaders to make sure we reach out to various school communities to provide updates about what's taking place at each of our buildings, particularly those that are being most disrupted. Um, and remind folks that COVID has had a pretty significant impact on supply chain, on the ability to locate folks, and we've had some abatements that have been taking place as well. But we'll get more in depth of that next week, so really appreciate it and looking forward to more joy. With that, we'll move to agenda item 11.1, which is the personnel reports. And we'll entertain motions.
I move the personnel report for Dr.
Second. Moved by Pat, was it? Seconded by Joe. Uh, any discussion, conversation, questions about the personnel report?
Sure, I'll just say, I'm going to, the reason we moved the personnel report out of the consent agenda is because I have to recuse myself, I will have to abstain on voting for this report, because my daughter, who is a teacher at LACS, is on the report. So, uh, there apparently is some regulations that bar me from voting for her.
Next time you say that, we will stand up and clap for your daughter. With that, all in favor of the personnel report? All opposed? All abstaining? Haxis? Fantastic, thank you. We will now move to agenda item 11.2, which is listed here as retiree health insurance. And I know that we have some of our amazing retirees coming to present some information to us and then an additional presentation afterwards. And if kindly, just to make sure again that we have it recorded, if we could identify ourselves, that would be fantastic.
We'll start with introductions.
Uh, I'm Denise Skelberg, I taught the district for 30 years at three or four elementary schools.
I'm Sandra Shore, um, I'm a recently retired pediatrician. I'm living in Hendersonville, North Carolina, and I married to Chuck Berkhammer, who served the high school as a chemistry teacher for 20 years.
And I'm Carl Madio. Um, I know most of you, uh, in one, from one form or another, uh, over the last 30 years or so. Uh, over 20 years of which I, I served as a teacher at LACS. Um, I also served for many years on the Equity and Inclusion Leadership Council for the district and have been on the board of the Village of Ithaca for just about as long as Sean has been on the Board of Education. And I'm currently the board president of the Board of Directors of the Village of Ithaca. Um, our team would like to start by saying a few things about the group that we represent. We're representing a group called WHIR, Watch Dogs for Health Insurance in Retirement. An informal group of retirees and their dependents receiving contractually guaranteed healthcare benefits from the ICSD. The group was formed in 2017 by retirees trying to help each other evaluate some of the new district healthcare, health coverage options. Our current membership of over 250 includes retirees who were formerly active employees under one of the four collective bargaining units or managerial and confidential or individual employee agreements or dependents of qualifying ICSD retirees. Our team would like to start by thanking the board for taking the time to hear from our group. Dr. Brown and Bob Van Kuren and Christina Braga have also shown genuine interest in retiree concerns about healthcare coverage. And we appreciate many hours Bob and Christina have committed to meeting and collaborating with us over the summer. So thank you for that. Since all board members may not be familiar with the progression that has led to the current district provided healthcare coverage for Medicare eligible retirees, we would like to offer a brief summary of the background. With additional information and printed materials, we will distribute a little later and have sent to you all so via email earlier. For many years, a benefit provided to ICSD retirees has been to remain on the district health plan, paying the same premium percentages as they did as active employees. Then, when retirees turned 65 and enrolled in and paid the Part B premiums, the Medicare became the primary insurance claims payer with Blue Cross Blue Shield as the secondary, with a reduction in the retiree Blue Cross Blue Shield premium contribution percentages. Um, I'd like to remind everyone that retirees pay for Medicare Part B. All of you, I think, are probably too young to yet be Medicare eligible, or most of you. Uh, we do pay for our Medicare Part B coverage, which helps offset some of the district's costs for retiree health insurance. Most of us have premiums taken out of our social security payments with a typical retired couple paying a little over $4,000 per year for our Medicare premiums. Now, this long time ICSD benefit of being able to remain on the healthcare plan changed in 2017, when the district decided to move Medicare retirees um, from the BCS plan onto a Hartford Medicare supplemental plan. Initially, Medicare retirees could opt out of this switch, though a short summer timeframe and cumbersome opt-out form made it a challenge for retirees, many of whom believed the intent was to discourage opting out. We have included, by the way, a copy of that opt-out form from that year, and we suggest that you take a look at it. Um, I think it, it might, it might be something that is a little bit disconcerting at the least. Then, in the fall of 2018, the district announced it would be offering only the Medicare Hartford supplemental plan, thus doing away with any opting out and moving all Medicare retirees to the Hartford supplemental plan, whether they wanted to or not. So choice was abruptly taken away. Then, effective January 1st, 2021, the district made an even more dramatic change to Medicare retiree health coverage, moving us all involuntarily off original Medicare and onto an Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan. Let me emphasize this, retirees did not ask to be removed from original Medicare. They were not given that option, but were switched involuntarily to Medicare Advantage Plan the district promised would be equal to or better than the coverage we had as active employees. Now, the district administration and Board of Education members who approved this change may have believed the Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan would provide coverage equal to or better than what we had as active employees. But we are here to tell you that the experiences of many retirees of denials of coverage for prescriptions, procedures and therapy, they previously had no trouble getting approved under the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. Preauthorization requirements that have delayed care or needed prescriptions to such a degree that many retirees often paid out of pocket rather than wait any longer for approval. And retirees who sought treatment for serious medical conditions at nationally renowned hospitals that refused to take patients with Aetna Medicare Advantage Plans. We also sent out a survey, um, to, uh, that was completed by more than half of our 250 WHIR members, which showed that while some retirees were satisfied with Aetna Advantage Plan, 76% of the respondents rated the Medicare Advantage Plan as not equal to or better than the Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan they previously had from the district. And we have that survey in the packet for you. But personal Ithaca retiring narratives are not the only indicators of inadequacies of Medicare Advantage Plans. Problems with these private plans have been documented in numerous studies, including a 2018 Inspector General's Report for the Department of Health and Human Services. As detailed in the New York Times, this IG report found that Medicare Advantage Plans, quote, "have been improperly denying many medical, medical claims to patients and physicians alike." And that these plans, quote, again, "have an incentive to deny claims in an attempt to increase their profits." So delaying approvals and denying claims is apparently part of the Medicare Advantage Business Plan. Remarkably, these findings were repeated in a new Inspector General's Report issued just this year, April of 2022, where the report itself stated, quote, "Some Medicare Advantage Organization denials of prior authorization requests raise concerns about beneficiary access to medically necessary care." So the federal government itself found that the significant Medicare Advantage Plan deficiencies identified in 2018 were still negatively impacting the healthcare of seniors four years later. Findings that are consistent with the experiences of many of our retirees. And my WHIR colleague, Dr. Shore, will say more about these retiree experiences.
I came on to, uh, where kind of in the beginning, I, I was kind of interested just to understand it, um, in an academic sense. But that became real world when my husband, who's had Parkinson's disease for 19 years, started getting denials for physical therapy under the Aetna plan. I wrote my first letter to the WHIR group only after spending 60 hours of my own time trying to rectify it. I was struck by the fact that if someone like me, a physician, couldn't navigate the system successfully, who could? I was persistent though, because I really understood that the consistent exercise that PT offered was the thing that kept Chuck functional and out of a wheelchair, simply. At one point, when he was discharged to home therapy by Aetna, which was simply a sheet with exercises on it, we started finding other programs for him and paid out of pocket. Today, he's allowed one session a week, not the two that was prescribed, and we supplement that with other programs at our own expense. We're fortunate to be able to do that, not all our retirees are. It doesn't have to be this hard, and it wasn't this hard under Blue Cross Blue Shield or Hartford. The reason I'm here in person today is that it's such an important issue for many of us. And I want to emphasize this by being here in person. Personally, I was also freaked out when I clicked hit on one of the Zoom calls. So, um, anyway, here I am. Please know that we really do appreciate the board's interest and concern over this last year. In the fall, it seemed like the members of the board weren't even aware of our concerns, though we had certainly communicated them to Human Resources and their insurance consultant, ENV. In April, we met with Dr. Brown, Rob Ainsley and Moira Lang, and we were told that the district was now aware of our issues and wanted to make this right. Human Resources and ENV were tasked with meeting with us cooperatively to come up with an insurance plan that would satisfy the retirees. Although we met as often as weekly for two months and tried to communicate how this plan was just not working for many of us and what we thought the problems were, it, it seemed to us at the end that administration's focus was more on convincing us the superiority of the Aetna plan and trying to get our endorsement. To say that we did not feel heard would be an understatement. Though I'm a physician, I'm not an expert on the ins and outs of insurance plans and have had to learn a whole new language and something about how these different plans work. I think the most important thing to understand when we are contrasting this present plan with the one we had is the concept of managed care, which is the model of all Medicare Advantage Plans. In Advantage Plans, the government pays a lump sum per person to Aetna or some other insurance company, and they in turn relieve the government of any responsibility. So instead of with a supplement, it goes to Medicare and then Medicare shares, sends it to the insurance company. The insurance company, this, this way, the insurance company takes care of it all. Although it looks like Medicare plus a supplement under one roof. Although it looks like Medicare plus a supplement under one roof, it really is different. My fellow physicians call these plans disadvantaged plans. The Aetna Plan, like all Advantage Plans, is less costly because they manage us. Well, how did they do that? Well, there are many ways and many nuances, but the four principal ways are excessive preauthorizations, high rates of denials, purposely difficult appeal processes, and terrible reimbursement of hospitals and doctors. This is clearly a preferred profit model, and the savings are passed on to their stockholders. In our case, Aetna Medicare Advantage's ability to save money by dictating what care we can and can't have allows them to offer the plan at a lower cost to the district and still make money. But it's off the backs of our retirees, and really, we're your most vulnerable population. Neither the Blue Cross/Blue Shield Secondary Plan nor the Hartford Supplemental Plan will manage care models. If we still had either of them, believe me, we would not be here today. We understand you have been told that most of our cases have been resolved. Our experience with E&amp;V is that resolved means that they have checked it off their to-do list. I can tell you that that does not mean that the situations have been resolved to satisfaction of the retirees or our medical providers. We have a credibility problem. A few actual cases here I'll just mention quickly, as an example of some of the ways the Aetna Plan has failed us. One woman was denied IV therapy for a chronic wound infection. Aetna did finally agree to surgical debridement of the wound and a course of by-mouth antibiotics, but this sort of interference with a physician's prescribed plan would have been unheard of under our formal plan. This particular case was really worrisome to me, as I knew that the incomplete treatment, which can happen with by-mouth antibiotics, could have resulted in a bone or a blood infection or worse. In this case, some consultant at the insurance company didn't know the patient was making a decision that overrode the physician's plan of treatment. Another retiree was not allowed to have a much-needed and very specialized neurological procedure at a well-known clinic close to his home, because the clinic did not accept our plan, and in fact, would not accept any Advantage Plan. And he had to go over a hundred miles to another medical center that would take him. This was a solution that involved four months of delay, thousands of dollars of out-of-pocket expenses. A third retiree has been denied rehab in a nursing home despite the fact that she's not mobile. These represent only a few complaints we have had from our fellow retirees. Please understand that we did not experience these excessive preauthorizations or denials with Blue Cross/Blue Shield or Hartford, nor did we have problems getting good providers or hospitals to accept our insurance and take care of us. Many retirees have told us that they just don't have the energy to fight this when they're sick, or should they. As one retiree said, "I cannot file an appeal from my hospital debt." Many retirees have complained that their treatment plans have been altered by Aetna despite the objection of their physicians. We, as a group, are not able to investigate these claims. E&amp;V has investigated them, but for the most part, has sided with Aetna's decisions. Many of us believe that E&amp;V has a conflict of interest as they chose this plan and presumably profit from it, and are tasked by administration to save the district money. E&amp;V's fiscal responsibility is to their company, to Aetna, whose plan they recommended, and to the district that hires them as a consultant. The district is also tasked, E&amp;V, with helping we, the retirees, resolve problems. But this puts them in conflict, as stated in the name. They really have four boxes. It's a bad system; it's not our place to tell you how to fix it, but it is our place to tell you why we believe it's not working. We are retirees of this district or dependents of those retirees. We do not have formal representation from an attorney or a union. What we do have is the promise you made in good faith to allow retirees to maintain coverage equivalent to the district plan, which we enjoyed upon retirement. By imposing the Aetna Insurance Plan on us, that promise has been broken. You have only to look at the number of complaints you have had to notice. We respectfully ask the board, as Dr. Brown suggested, to make this end right. Thank you for caring; thank you for giving us the time to present our position, and thanks for your consideration. We understand that Human Resources and E&amp;V have a different take on this and have likely made a case for keeping the present plan. We ask you to keep an open mind as you make your decision. And I'll turn this back to Carl to wrap it up.
Our group wants to be clear that we understand that superintendent and members of the Board of Education have difficult jobs, and that a significant portion of your responsibilities includes being responsible for overseeing the district's almost $150 million budget. We are here speaking for retirees who have given many decades of their lives to making the ICSD one of the finest school districts in the country. And we certainly remain behind the district, being the best it can be for the students and families of this community. We also believe the district has an obligation to fulfill its promise to those former employees to provide health coverage that is equal to or better than what we had when we retired, when we retired. We acknowledge, as our survey showed, that some retirees are satisfied with the Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan, but we found this to be only about twenty-five percent in our sample. Therefore, it is our belief and our recommendation to the board that the only fair resolution to the retiree health coverage problems we have described is to once again give Medicare retirees a choice, a real choice this time, to choose one of the three recent retiree plans: either the current Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan, or Original Medicare plus the Hartford Supplement, or Original Medicare in combination with the district's Blue Cross/Blue Shield Plan, which is currently enjoyed by retirees who are under age sixty-five and active employees, and that was enjoyed by all Medicare-age retirees prior to the changes that were made in 2017. We believe providing retirees with this choice is the best and most equitable way to meet the needs of Medicare retirees and the Ithaca City School District. So, thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I'm sure we do have questions. I'm not sure the best way to proceed. I don't know if Bob and Christine are also going to provide some additional information, so if it's wise for us to ask the questions now or to hear from them as well. I'm just trying to ask my board colleagues how you'd like to proceed.
Sure, just by way of clarification, I don't know if we're presenting any new information that the board hasn't heard us at the various committee meetings and here a couple of times, too. If you want us to sort of reiterate our side, then that's fine, or we can just engage in question and answer.
So, before I turn it over to my board colleagues, I also want to acknowledge that this has been an ongoing dialogue, and I'm saying this as well to reiterate for our community. The letters, the emails, the phone calls, the meetings, the board has been actively engaged in this for some time, including our board member and two folks who are members of the retiree health insurance. I know that Moira Lang has also been actively involved, both in the group and in the meetings as well, but I want to make sure that we acknowledge that and proceed from there. So, with that, questions, conversations, discussion points from our board colleagues?
I don't really have any questions, especially since it's been an ongoing dialogue and we continue to delve into this. So, I think when we hear from, I think it's ongoing conversation, so if there's more moving forward.
I'm relatively new to this, although I am one of the over-sixty-five Medicare folks who's quietly interested in this. We hear a very different story from you than we do from the district. Frankly, it's difficult to parse it all out, which says to me, we need to keep talking. We can't do that indefinitely and shouldn't do that indefinitely, but it seems that there are some basic facts that are in dispute. One of those being the number of people who are unhappy with Aetna and their reasons for their unhappiness, whether that is founded unhappiness or some misunderstanding of how problems can be resolved. My presumption is that when people are unhappy, they have a reason for being unhappy. So, that's my bias right there. I do find the results of the survey, although interesting, not completely comprehensive, because I know that when I filled out the survey, because I had heard information from others about their unhappiness, I hedged on my response to the survey and indicated that although I wasn't personally happy, that I was personally happy enough with Aetna, I knew others weren't. So, I think the percentages there are somewhat skewed, if that makes sense. So, I hate to say it, but I think more data is needed to resolve what are still clearly issues that are out there.
Can we respond to it? I don't know what the protocol is.
It's tough, because we weren't going to have a discussion, but I would like to hear a response.
Well, this is a little bit different than what would normally happen during public session, and that's why it's on the agenda as a presentation. So, the idea would be that, yes, there would be a little bit of dialogue. There may also be a point in time, similar to the board responses, where we may not respond and say we need to find additional information, perhaps some conversation. So, please, I know that folks have already been more than patient through the couple of years that this has been going on, but this will continue to be an ongoing conversation. But by all means, let's engage and see where we can find some commonalities.
So, does that mean I can respond?
Yes.
Next time, I'll just say yes.
Initially, during our summer meetings, there was an agreement that a survey would go out. We have contact information for the 250 retirees who have come to us. We know there are hundreds more. The district has contact information for all the retirees, of course, and that would give the full results, which is what we would like to know also. We want full information as well. And then, a decision was made by the administration that they were not any longer interested in doing a survey. And so, time was getting short. It was August, and we thought, well, we have contact for 250 people; that's better than zero. And so, we'll send it out. And we really had no idea what we would get, no idea. I mean, we hear from people. People, I would say, at least once we'd come and, you know, email us, call us, and tell us situations, sometimes terrible situations that they're facing, but we just didn't know if they were just a handful. But I agree with you, and we have reached out to Cornell, to their statistical center that makes surveys. They would be very willing to work with us to survey all the retirees to find out what it is that they would like. And as Carl said, we feel, if it's true that so many people are happy with Aetna Advantage, then they'll choose Aetna Advantage. And if there are people who have experienced great hardship by being on Aetna Advantage, they'll choose something else. And I will say that in 2017, when the, in theory, choice was allowed to be made, the story was that this plan will be as good or better, and if there are any gaps, the district will make up for those gaps. And what people have found, that that piece never happened or rarely happened, and that people ended up paying out of pocket. So, I think the idea of getting more information is excellent, surveying everybody, and secondly, giving people an informed choice, because now people have been on three different plans, and they will know what it is that they're actually opting for.
So, I've been involved in these discussions for the entire time I've been on the board, I think, or when it first became a question of whether the district was going to make some changes to healthcare, not just retiree healthcare, but changes to participation in the consortium. And as a retiree from the district, I taught at Ithaca High School from 1985 to 2010, so I was particularly interested. I've learned more about healthcare than I ever thought I would. And I still find myself constantly with new questions, you know? And so, some of the things you talked about tonight are things that I feel like I need to investigate further. I was not on the listserv, so I didn't answer, I didn't get the survey. I think that we are very interested in getting more information from the approximately eight-hundred people, that's not retirees, it's spouses, who are on Aetna, and many of whom were on the Hartford, which I was as well. And I was not a retiree, I mean, I was not Medicare-eligible when we were on Blue Cross/Blue Shield. So, in any case, I definitely feel like I need more information. And also, I think you're aware, and we have only very, very recently become aware, that there are potential legal barriers to the notion of choosing, particularly choosing, allowing retirees to choose Blue Cross/Blue Shield. So, that's something that, you know, we need to really, you know, find out more before we have any notion of how we, if there's a possibility of moving forward with any kind of choice for retirees. So, we're just, you know, still have more to learn.
So, I would just like to ask, last week during our Human Resources working session, we were presented with some material that specifically compared Blue Cross/Blue Shield coverage with Aetna, and also gave us a number of comparison points. Was everyone provided with that information?
I believe so, early on, yes.
Yeah, it was one of, yeah, when we had the meetings.
I can answer that.
So, you were provided with that information?
Yes, and I can tell you, Pat, that we, on paper, it looks pretty good. As Christina says, it checks all the boxes, but you know, that's what they offer, but then they deny.
So, I just want to say a couple of things for the public. The information that we have from our healthcare provider, first of all, shows that the Aetna Plan covers everything the Exelis Plan covers, plus pays for more and pays everything where Exelis has deductibles and copays. That's the information that we have.
Looks pretty good.
That it does, in fact, cover much more. Now, I understand that in the workings of this, that a huge obstacle that people are finding is that the Aetna Plan requires prior approval, and the Exelis Plan does not. But not requiring prior approval in no way guarantees or even implies that Exelis is actually going to cover those costs. And in fact, in one of the other documents that we were provided, the denial rate for Exelis is three times the denial rate for Aetna. And that can be documented.
Well, we were told that, and then I checked with the head of the Teachers Union to
Well, we were told that and then I checked with the head of the teachers' union to ask, I mean, if you look at those numbers, it looks like Blue Cross Blue Shield is denying at a far higher, a higher rate, maybe three times.
Yes, but like the-
But there are no complaints from the people who have that insurance. So it makes you wonder if that's accurate.
So are you, are you, are you saying that, that we're falsifying or our, our insurance agent is falsifying?
We're just challenging the accuracy of those, of those numbers.
You're saying it doesn't make sense.
Right.
But you have nothing to base that on?
Well, we're basing on the fact that the, the union, the teachers' union, has not heard of complaints. And if they had as many denials as those numbers are showing, then they would have heard. The teachers' union would have heard a lot of complaints.
I, and I just want to just make this public, denials per member, no one's getting huge numbers of denials. So denials per member from Exelis, 0.74. Denials per member from Aetna, 0.24. And the amount of the denials, the cost of the denial that Exelis is denying is basic, of each denial, the average cost is double what Aetna is denying. Fifteen, $1,515 per denial versus $838.86 per an Aetna denial. And that's a lot of money. And this is, this is, this is the information that we have to work with and weigh carefully. And I just, I want to make it a public record that this is the information that we have. The, the difference is between getting preapproval, which can be cumbersome, and getting what you want done and thinking Exelis will cover it and that they don't.
Just one reminder that Medicare would be the primary for us. For those of us, it wouldn't be just Blue Cross Blue Shield. It would be Medicare and then either Blue Cross as a secondary or Medicare and then Hartford as a secondary. And you can read, that's a supplemental, you can read about those and you will, many details about Medicare will tell you that they don't have preauthorization requirements on Medicare that they do have on the Medicare Advantage plans. And if the, the reports that we cited, the inspector general's reports from Health and Human Services point out the denials that are happening, that are improperly happening. So even though on paper it shows that everything is covered, these reports by the government itself said that many times there are denials that are improper denials.
I have actually been following this particular issue for a number of years and out of concern for an elderly relative whose health I was caring for. And there's something I watch on TV every night, I think it's Perry Mason, which always gets interrupted by those commercials, Joe Namath screaming at us to go to a Medicare Advantage plan.
Right.
Okay, those are not the Medicare Advantage plans. There are Medicare Advantage plans and Medicare Advantage plans. There's one that is endorsed by AARP that my relative used and when he passed away after a brief but very intense illness and had many tens of thousands of dollars in hospital bills because the state didn't pay a penny. There, there can be good plans. I actually went into this meeting asking about that point and just, so people know, this, this is not a Joe Namath Medicare Advantage plan. This is a, this is an individually-
Customized.
Customized plan for our retirees to keep, to keep improving and cover things that need to be covered. I will never in my life have coverage from Cornell like this or from anyone else. This is an amazing plan.
It looks amazing on paper.
But the, but the people who have found when they go to get care, it's not what it looks like. And so I think Jill's point is well taken. These people had the, you know, they had the Platinum Plan that you provide for actives and it's the Platinum Plan that they had until the day they turned 65. And it was the Platinum Plan they had until they were moved off of it for either Hartford or the involuntary move to Medicare Advantage Plan. They'd never had these problems before. They are physicians, if you listen to E and V, they will tell you, it's always, it's always, it's the retirees' fault you didn't have the right paperwork. It's the physician's office who didn't code it right, who didn't hand in the right, this is always their fault. It was never, they, these are the same people who didn't have any problems before. And so on paper, it looks great. In reality, lived experience, it is not what it appears to be.
So I'm, I want to interject for a second.
Can I just, I just want to make one point of clarification. This does not, these statistics do not compare people on Medicare with an Exelis plan at having a higher rate. These are active members on Exelis who are under 65 and they're getting denied at three times the rate that you are.
Do you get any emails from those actives about their problems?
I, all I can say is these are the, these are the statistics we have and I want to let the community know that this is the information that we have.
I think that's very important.
Right, and the interjection I want to make is that we're recognizing that this is a highly complex situation. First, so someone who was mentored, I hope I'm okay saying this, mentored by Carl, recognizing people's service to the district, right? That there was a promise made in terms of a health insurance plan that would be equal or better than. The data that we receive says that that's taking place. The experiences we're hearing from other folks is that that's not the case. I also want to say that I'm wary of placing blame in any particular place, including E and V, who's been extremely helpful and diligent to the questions, responses to the questions we have asked. I realize that other folks may have a different expectation. Some of the information we're receiving is the number one ask from the WHIR group may in fact, could be a possible consideration of gift of public funds. And this is not about a monetary expense, about how much it would cost the district, but that there would be a difference in expense and that that may become somewhat problematic. That is a question that we continue to ask to get additional information about. What, what could that look like? So there is an ask from the group. We are not sure as a board that that is even possible. We will continue to ask that question. To move, to continue moving things forward, again, I apologize to say this has been an ongoing issue, but it does seem like additional data would be helpful. If I understand the numbers correctly, we're talking about a response rate of about 125 people out of possible 800 folks who are on the plan. Decent response rate from the folks who are social scientists still would want additional information.
We didn't have the addresses of all, we only had our-
And that's something that as a district that we'll look to our folks to try to figure out in the big place. The point here is not to push this down the road because we know folks want immediate change. And there is conflicting information that continues to come from, from multiple perspectives. So I'm trying to figure out if what is being asked for, we are told by multiple, both our legal counsel and other legal counsel, is not possible. Is there another option that the board should consider, think about, explore? I just want to make sure we're putting that all out there that we have some idea of how best to-
In our packets, we have options for you to think about.
I read the letters, yep.
Several options and it's really not, it is your responsibility to come up with a solution. We understand that and we greatly appreciate the time and consideration that you've given to this matter. But I do think that we just, it can't be pushed down the road any further because, I mean, just yesterday or today, I got another email from a retiree who's, you know, her continuing care community will not accept the Medicare Advantage plan at all. She pays out of pocket for everything and then tries to get reimbursement. It takes her months and it's still not resolved and then she gives up. So these are, these are ongoing.
Absolutely, absolutely. And this is, please take this in a way in which it's intended. It's not trying to be defensive about what the district has done. I was one of the people that voted for it, right? It's not trying to defend the plan. But I also know that as someone who's assisting my parents work through their health insurance, who are on a state plan that has never been changed, they are increasingly finding frustration with what they're being denied in reapprovals. And so part of what I asked Carl during the conversation, is this a switch of plan or is this a shift in insurance? And it's going to happen throughout, no matter what the insurance plan is. I'm, I'm not looking for an answer now. I think that what needs to happen is for us to, or to follow up with the information, to make sure everyone has time to consume the packet that was emailed to us, I want to say yesterday or two days ago, right? That we can do that and then we'll be back. We will find a way to communicate directly with whomever we're tasked to communicate directly with. And that may be from myself as board president, most likely will be from our director of HR or Dr. Brown. And we, please, as much as I can communicate this as well, we're aware of the sense of urgency and immediacy that a resolution is needed. That this has been a topic for, for us for quite some time and it will be until we find some sort of resolution and even if it's not one that we have decided what we will find of a resolution.
And we appreciate that.
So the only other thing I would ask is, you know, I, I think E and V and HR are trying to, you know, they've come, they've researched it, they've looked at the numbers, they've put it together a certain way. I, my question would be whether the way they put it together is accurate. And that might explain why, you know, we're having a different experience than the numbers are showing.
And maybe the, because we've had one board member participate exclusively for some time. Another thing that may happen, and I don't like when people say this, but it may mean us holding another space to have a conversation as well to just focus on this with trying to reconcile these pieces of information. So I happen to know Carl, I will follow up Carl directly if that's okay with folks and then we can, we can proceed from there. I don't know if there's additional questions from the board colleagues.
I just want to make one comment because you said, you know, that the board education and the admin, when we made these shifts, we may have believed that Aetna was equal to, we absolutely did.
We believe that.
We believe that.
We believe that because we were told the same thing in the summer Zoom meetings before the move was made, that it was going to be absolutely seamless. So I know that you believed it.
Well, thank you greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want to hand those packets to, to Tricia, she'll make sure everyone hears them.
We're all there.
Thank you so much. Beyond the excessive language that I can use in offering a response, one of my pedagogical approaches sometimes is just a quick breath of silence so we're not just jumping from one issue to another. And so that's the hesitation and the pause, just to honor what just has taken place as well. So with that, we will move to agenda item 11.3, which is the academic calendar, excuse me. Lillie Tauckett, you'll be coming up to join us.
Hello, good evening, everyone. For those of you who are at home or who are in the room who don't know me, I'm Lilly Tauckett and I get to be the deputy superintendent for the Ethica City School District. You will see attached to this agenda item, there are a couple of proposed potential changes to the academic calendar for this year. And these are intended to create more opportunities for us to actualize learning forward ICSDs. We also recognize that these are complicated potential shifts, as Leah spoke so beautifully to earlier. And thus, we wanted to bring this to the Board of Education and engage everyone in discussion in terms of looking at this possibility. So we're looking at two half-days for pre-K through eighth grade. And one is in early November and one is in mid-February. So it's November 2nd and February 15th. At the elementary level, these would be half-days, they would dismiss at 11 o'clock and be provided with lunch, right? We've done half-days before, students would end early and staff could then work together on our year-to-year learning maps and anti-marginalization curriculum and norming across all of our eight elementary buildings. So that would be pre-K through five. And on those same days, we would be looking at middle schools at Boynton and Duett dismissing at 12:30. And during that time, staff and families would have time to engage with one another, right? So essentially creating a caregiver educator conference space that doesn't currently exist within, within our schedule, whereas it does at the elementary level, right? So knowing that caregiver engagement is extremely important and furthers our goals around culturally responsive and anti-racist education, this is, this is where these are coming from. We also recognize that it is, it, the school year has already begun, right? So educators approached us this summer as part of the professional development process. And we're really hopeful that these two things could take place so that we can really, as I said, further many of these schools. And we also recognize that it's, it's a challenge for our caregivers and figuring out what to do on those half-days. And that it's also a challenge for our partners who provide aftercare, beforecare, daycare, after-school programs as well. So, and then the last thing that is on there, again, as Leah pointed to, is a, an early release day that is in May, that is part of state law. And we are required to do that as part of our safety plan. And so we had not done that the past couple of years due frankly due to COVID, right? And we know that we need to institute that again. So again, we recognize that this is a challenge. We're certainly open for discussion and it's ultimately the decision of the board.
But we're not open to that.
It is listed as an action item.
Is it?
The board. So I would imagine that there would want to be action sooner rather than later if this is going to happen, but I don't want to, I think folks would want to know, but that's something for us to discuss if it needs to be of hope this evening.
We'll have to begin with other iterations of an academic calendar. We put it out to the communities to keep our feedback on, in between meetings and conferences. So if I can see us going there about two, although we would love to have it done somewhere.
So the, the issue that Leah talked about for the early release day, so that they can't be in the buildings, so that they can't operate on that day. So that's a challenge for them and there's no way around that.
But the state law is that everyone has to leave the building, right? So and I'm a teacher at an field, I would have to leave the building and could not, could not stay.
I'm just trying.
I apologize to you.
Well, I also have, you know, I am concerned about the impact on the after-school programs and caregivers for the elementary piece of it. I think it is, it is much less of an issue for the middle school. I had just finished looking at the agenda and looking at this proposal when I got a text from an elementary teacher who said, please, no half-days. And I remember when I was teaching at Ethica High School, we had, for a period of years, we had a half-day every month, I think. we had, for a period of years, we had a half-day every month, I think, for professional development and meetings. And I found it exhausting. It felt like we kind of went through the schedule double-time and, and then we were trying to focus on doing important work. And I have to say, this, this work that elementary teachers are engaged in and that they want to be engaged in is vitally important. I believe in it. But I am concerned, as I said, about the impact on families and what, and the reduction of instructional time for kids for, for this work to be done. And I'm just wondering, is there another way to allow these teachers to, to meet in evenings, on weekends to do the work, rather than disrupting the school day? And particularly, as Leah pointed out, the implications for making this change after, after-school programs have done their budgets, plans have been made to do it now, seems like it, it has an additional negative consequence.
If I may, just talk a little bit about your excellent question regarding evenings, weekends and off-contract time. Some of the, we certainly do that and we put a great deal of resources, thanks to the board and the community's support, in order to compensate educators beyond this whole day. We've also heard a growing increase of feedback asking for opportunities to norm around curriculum to occur during contract hours so that folks can have greater balance, can be with their, their families, et cetera, so that educators can as well. So in some regard, this is an effort to be responsive to it. And again, no solutions perfect at all. So just so you know, that's, that's a little bit of the.
Yeah, I mean, I recognize that, that's the, you know, the impact on teachers. And we couldn't compel teachers to work outside of contract time. So there would be some people who, who couldn't participate because of their, their other responsibilities. But, you know, I still am concerned particularly to be instituting this now, the impact on, on all of the elementary school students in the district.
Additional board questions?
Yeah, so if we go to a half-day of instruction, where does that full day get made up? Where do those two half-days get made up in this new calendar?
Our instructional hours are still okay during that with two half-days at elementary.
Eleven, so it's a day.
Okay, well, I will, I will echo why I was concerned about how this impacts families, working families of every single elementary school child, whether or not they're in an after-school program that runs in our eight elementary schools or in an off-site after-school program. I had parents coming to me at the beginning of the year panicking because of holidays on September 26th and October 5th for which their after-school programs had no plans to be operating and can, and couldn't accommodate a full day. And as we all know, many, many people in this town work at one of our two institutions of higher education, for the beginning of the year is an extremely demanding time. And they can't just take a day off. And so those days have already stressed huge numbers of parents in our, in our district. And then to put in two more half-days after the school year has been set and, you know, one of them coming up fairly quickly, I, I have concerns about that. I, I, at the very least, would want to send this out for public comment.
Yes, what?
Oh, I have to commend the staff for the half-day from a middle school perspective, especially since it's a caregiver educator discussion time. Because it's quite challenging for elementary parents as they transition from elementary school to middle school, not knowing that, oh, do I have time? Or is there some allotment in the calendar for me to be able to speak with my student's teacher? So I, I have to commend us for moving that ahead to help families transition. And knowing that, yeah, there are challenges with the union contract and how many hours. So the challenges that we're gonna see with getting this done for elementary students is, is definitely real.
Additional board questions?
Yeah, I, I'm going with the majority sentiment here, I think, Lily. And that's that I, I don't find the reasons for doing this at this point in time as compelling as I might have in May. I've always been sort of on the fence about the value of the half-days when I was an employee here. But at this point in the school year, it seems like a no, no starter to me.
One adjustment I see we don't have, and we probably didn't have it during COVID, in May, there was always like the Friday before Memorial Day was noted as a makeup day. We had that day off and makeup day if it was a snow day. And I think several years ago, we, we always made up because it was always a snow day. So we have to take that into consideration too. There's no, none of those days there and we're still getting the instruction time in. And knowing that it's coming at this late time, but yet the challenges to me, the needs of the educators and the building staff to just have the training required.
Anybody else?
I have a question. So I guess it's really cool that ICSD is providing like opportunities like this for educators. And there are, like, I'm realizing both sides of implementing this. But I'm seeing that, like, there is no mention of, like, high schoolers. And I feel like this type of program would be, there would be less problems for half-days for, like, high schoolers.
We have talked briefly, but not at length, about creating something like a caregiver and educator communication half-day for, for all of secondary. And frankly, part of my thinking was start smaller as opposed to, to all. So that's kind of where that's been, Grace.
And does that include like the, to have like the high school, like, staff and educators already like done the anti-marginalization curriculum stuff?
There are a number of educators at my high school who have engaged in the various institutes that we've offered the last five years. And it's certainly not everybody in our school district or everybody at the high school. But I'll say there's a, there's definitely a growing cohort that has participated, especially in the humanities, which has been really cool to me.
I'm gonna quote something that Dr. Brown said about a daily schedule, which is if you can find me the perfect daily schedule, please let me know because I have yet to see one. And the same is true of an academic calendar, that there is never going to be a perfect academic calendar. I'm glad to live in a community and a school district which honors and celebrates Juneteenth, which is a new addition to the calendar as well, which also means that we have, for lack of a better word, less days to play around with in terms of professional development and things of that nature, along with all the other holidays, but absolutely essential. And so I think what I'm hearing from some board colleagues is that it would be good for us to post this on the district website to elicit feedback. I know Lily and I had the briefest of conversations talking about our community partners and what the impact would be. My first thought was, as I said to Lily, how am I gonna get my grandbaby at 11 o'clock? And then especially if there's no childcare provided during that time period, right? So I think for a number of us, this hits home personally as well. So that's just, you know, a theoretical notion of what's gonna happen. So if we can push the, if we, if we can table this until the 27th, I think we'd be able to have much more informed, again, information and feedback from community members and from some of our partners about how best to proceed. I, I want to make sure that we have the time to do so. That also would mean that we'd be giving people about five weeks' notice to make this happen, which is even shorter than giving them seven weeks' notice. So I'm also mindful of that. So didn't know if that was a approach for the board. I almost think we need to do that with Sherrod, that we realize it puts that time limitation.
And this would go out, not just posting it on the website, but as a form of communication, as a formal communication to all, to district parents in elementary and middle school, asking them to provide feedback on this? I, I mean, just posting it on the website is not gonna get you a, a relative example.
We can send it out as a communication to our families to make sure folks see it. What, give a, what, what do you think?
Just a question, a couple of quick questions. Would, would we consider eliminating the November day, knowing that that is quite soon? And simply piloting this as the February day? That's one question. And then the other question is, so typically what we do is we put it out on the website and then we push it to all social media and ask for feedback. And depending on the year, it'll get a lot of feedback because people push it out to their networks. And, and then others don't. If it were part of a communication, I just want, I just want folks to know that it certainly isn't set in stone because I also know that sometimes when we put communications out, it feels like, whoa, you guys are doing this? And yeah, I just want to be confident to folks, yeah.
And me, I have to, for folks who are listening to this, this academic calendar conversation is one that we have often. And I'll remind folks that we've had young people come to board meetings for the last four years asking for a shift in the academic calendar. And the process was also as important as the product. We listened, we made adjustments, we got feedback and we ultimately made some shifts, significant shifts, as noted, to our academic calendar. I see this being no different. While there was a sense of urgency amongst young people who came each time wanting it to happen immediately, please note that there's some sense of urgency amongst educators who've heard, we've heard from. While there's some folks who don't want any parts of that day, there are many who are looking at Lily and I, make this happen tomorrow. So just, we, like everything here, there are multiple perspectives and multiple wishes. And we also recognize that some folks want this to already get done and some folks will understand the process may look like it being happening in two or three years. So that's the beautiful place we always find ourselves at this table, trying to make everybody happy.
And, and so Lily, just to your first question, I very much like the idea. At the same point in time, I want to reiterate something that Karen said in terms of trying to get our middle school families into the building, not waiting until February, but doing that in November is empowering. So back to the question, where do we find ourselves? How do we want to proceed? Or do we want to ask what we posted and then use some of our social media feeds to push out, to inquire about feedback? With the understanding that, again, that may create additional hardship.
I, I think that's gonna be extremely confusing and stressful to people. I, I think you put out some proposed dates, some people are going to not read it and put it right on their calendars and then be stunned when, you know, when their kid stays in school for the whole day. You know, it's just, it, it seems like a logistical nightmare to me at this point in time to put that out. If we put out a whole revised calendar, that, that, I mean, that's, that would be the only fair way to do it. But then what would we say? Like, maybe we'll have a half-day on that day if you all agree or if you all think it's a good idea? It's, it's too late, is my, my feeling.
But yet Lily, you said that you heard from staff wanted this half-day.
Yes, not, I did not pull every staff over. Right, Lynn? Right, Mar?
Don't put this on me.
Lloyd, help me.
I'm just saying, I didn't ask Lynn.
Well, again, at any point in time, we can entertain a motion. I, I, I'm also just trying to figure out what's the best way to move forward.
No action is, we don't bring it back. Instead of table it or instead of voting it, yes, affirmatively, for which was a killer.
Well, there, there has been some suggestion of a modification. Like, we go ahead with the middle school piece. We pilot the elementary piece in the spring to just account for, you know, that it's, it's awfully late to be springing this on folks.
May I ask for something? We haven't talked about this yet and I can't read your facial expressions.
Try.
How about we come back to you all in two weeks for something different or not? Give us some time to work on this with some other folks, work with our partners. Because right now, there's too many different options and things. And we come back and we make some decisions at that next meeting, if we come back to you with something. But because at that point, it's gonna be almost too late to do much after that. But it's too, we're all, we gotta be tight on our end before we bring it back.
Is that what proposed? That's what's very much.
And, and I, I don't want it to sound like I don't think this is important work. But sometimes when many, many families get frustrated and overwhelmed at short-term changes, that tends to undermine the value of the work that's being done during those changes. So I, I, I really do feel like we didn't have enough lead time and our families don't have enough lead time for this November day.
Karen, I saw your case.
I, I just want to always remind us, March 13th, 2020, no one had lead time for quite a few things. So we, we always have to remember that we may not always have lead time, but who are we listening to and what training are we putting in place and so forth? So let's not go backwards to complacency and giving ourselves too much time to do certain things.
I would humbly reiterate that same idea that change sometimes is gonna be uncomfortable and if we're going to try, but in the process, though, I do like the suggestion of you all coming back to us in two weeks and that that would absolutely be of one way or the other, whatever's presented and we try to make that happen. Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lily.
Thank you.
Agenda item 11.4, a selection of an audit committee member. This is for a discussion. Amanda, please correct me if I'm wrong, when I'm wrong, not if I'm wrong at any point in time. The audit committee of the Ethica City School District is, the audit committee is the only committee that's mandated by law for the district to have. And as part of that committee, we are required to select two community members to serve on that committee.
And that is my understanding.
Currently, we have one community member who is willing to serve and that is Dan Rightland. We voted Dan on that committee during the reorganization meeting. The second community member we voted on that reorganization committee has unfortunately had to no longer participate moving forward.
After many years of service, so I just want to say thank you to Don, just absolute years and years of dedication to the audit committee. We don't mean often, but they are mighty. And so we just want to publicly thank Don for all of the time and attention to the district financial operations.
Thank you, Don Waddle, for all that time. We left it on the agenda, not that we have a recommendation, but to ask our fellow board colleagues to consider putting forward a name or even, or even having conversations with folks. The audit committee meets four, officially four or five times a year. So we're, it's almost every other month. But it is an extremely important committee to make sure that district finances are in order. And so again, we left it on the agenda to encourage our board colleagues to consider names to put forward because we do not have a second person at this point in time. And I'm not asking for names now, but questions? Got it. And we could send you some of the minutes from previous audit committees so you can see what the time requirement is. Usually it meets on Wednesday evenings, 5:30, right?
And rarely, it is rarely. And I will, I will double-check if we can fill it with a board member or if it's just, you know, mandated three committee members and we, you know, have one community member. But I, I know we have to have three members, three members.
And you will see me at the audit committee again, Troy. Fantastic, so we'll leave that item just for discussion. Agenda item 11.5, policy 2350 is board meeting procedures. This is not something, again, that we were looking for action on this evening. You received an email talking about our board meeting procedures. There's been some conversation about moving some of our board meeting procedures. And basically, that means our board agenda, moving our board agenda around to be more flexible to community members, to be more productive for board members and our administrators. And so the current agenda is listed here. We wanna make sure folks have a chance to see it. I believe it will be a topic of conversation at our next policy committee meeting. We we put it on the agenda there. But in the meantime, if folks have suggestions, recommendations, things that we should be considering or doing, please let us know, we can have that conversation. Entertain parts of those conversations now, but it will be on the upcoming policy agenda. So we wanted to make sure that all board members were able to participate because we've already started some of those dialogues at policy. But we wanna make sure it was available for everybody. And student reps, given your time here, your recommendations will be extremely appreciated as you watch us progress through an agenda. Additional questions, comments?
So my understanding, Sean, is that one of the big issues here is is when we do executive sessions?
If we do, it's, it's.
When and if, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's one of it. Another is, for me, board responses. When is appropriate for a board response? Should it be changed to maybe a board update that provides us the opportunity to gather information? That's another idea. There are other things on the agenda that we don't always do. For example, we don't always do committee reports. We do that every other meeting. You know, there are things like that. Jill, to your point as well, if we have special presentations, should they be moved to the beginning of the meeting? So there's no question about the timing of those special presentations, especially if they include elementary school students as they have in the past. You know, should we get them home earlier? There are considerations like that that we've been entertaining to, again, to be receptive to some of the feedback we've been getting from folks as well about some of the special presentations, the organization, the productiveness, et cetera. All right. Be on the lookout for that. And please feel free to email any board members or the board officers to proceed from there. I wanna address two other items, or excuse me, four other items in other district business. At our meeting in August, we had tabled two different items. We had tabled any special advisory committees. We did not return to those on August 23rd. They are not on our agenda currently. For the time being, the board has decided at this point in time that there would not be advisory committees for this year, even while some of our previous advisory committee members wanna provide some additional information, particularly around early childhood education. I've been in contact with Ann Reitlin, who I know has been in contact with some other folks and wants at least give an update of the work that that committee did for the time that Ann was on it. The capital reserve community advisory is something that I still think we should consider for the time being. We're addressing most of these issues during the facilities committee, again, which will happen next week. Legislative advocacy was been a standing committee of the board. It was voted on at the reorganization meeting. If we are not going to fill that committee, it will take a resolution to remove it as a standing committee, at least for this upcoming year of the board. There has been other conversations about how we need to do that work in different ways without it being a standing committee because of the importance that the legislative advocacy committee has, the work it's done, and our connection to meet with our local elected officials. We may be able to do that without a standing committee, but that also, again, would need a resolution since we already adopted that. But I wanted to make sure we spoke to those. Those will both be on the agenda for our next meeting. They don't need to be long discussion items, but I wanna make sure we have some advance notice of what's taking place. And then lastly, folks had heard me talk about open meetings law. We are back to in-person meetings with a quorum, with the possibility of hybrid meetings if the board so chooses. And I will send around those procedures that we have entertained but have never officially adopted as well.
But we did adopt the resolution allowing for hybrid.
That is correct. We just have never finalized what the procedures would be to have those hybrid meetings. And that only applies primarily to board members.
Right.
So this is not about anybody else. Any questions? Fantastic. Well, with that, I believe agenda item 13 is adjourned. We are so adjourned.